This is the town of Kensington, Town Council meeting for Wednesday, September 13. I'm calling the meeting to order. We will forego the Pledge of Allegiance. We don't have a flag and it doesn't really work on Zoom. But we will have a moment of silence. Is there anyone that someone would like us to remember?
Yes, if I could, well, not a town resident, somebody very dear to our family Sullivan, or as everybody knew him, Sully Shields, passed away on Tuesday, September 5th. Sully's a friend of my son Finn's that they met in childhood cancer treatment at Children's Hospital. And Sully was diagnosed with neuroblastoma just before his fifth birthday and went through five and a half years of pretty excruciating treatment and did it with a constant smile and optimistic outlook and a willingness to help wherever he could, whether it was in the hospital, with other cancer kids outside of the hospital. But for everybody in the state of Maryland, he and his mom and several others pushed our legislature last in the 22 cycle to establish the Maryland Pediatric Cancer Fund, one of the first state level funds for pediatric cancer research. They were able to lobby successfully alongside the American Childhood Cancer Organization, who we are very fortunate. The CEO of ACCO is a town resident, Ruth Hoffman, and they were able to have the bill passed, signed by the governor and funded with $5 million towards children's cancer research. So that every family in Maryland who has a child diagnosed with childhood cancer, now there's more hope that we are on a path towards a cure or better treatments or better use of the treatments for kids, because most treatments plans are designed for adults, but you know, it's a pretty heavy heart in our house and we're going to miss Sully quite a bit.
Thank you, Connor. I'd also like us to think about Sharon Scott, longtime resident on Oberon, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Sharon is also a former council member and was just a great supporter of the town and she too will be very missed. So, is there anybody else? Okay, well, if we could just bow our heads for a few minutes. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move down to the approval of the minutes. Council, you received minutes from both the Town Council meeting on the 14th as well as our closed work session on the 20, excuse me, on the council meeting on the 14th and a closed work session on the 21st. Actually, it wasn't a closed meeting, was it? It was a closed meeting. Yes, we opened it and then closed it. I think there was just one tweak with the closed meeting minutes. Is that correct, Susan?
Yes, and I sent out revised minutes so that it should be.
And there were no changes to the, to the council meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, all right, we need to make a motion to approve the minutes. Let's start with the August 14th Town Council meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the August 14th Town Council meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now the council work session, closed meeting on August 21st?
Yep, I'll move that we adopt the minutes from the council's closed work session of August 21st.
Okay, as amended, I'm sorry for the.
As amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move down to the mayor and town council. Let's see, Connor, Darren, do you want to handle number one, introduce that?
This is the closed work session?
No, this was, well, I'm sorry. Yes, we're acknowledging it, but I I want to do the.
One B?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, yeah, I was just, we were going to do, I guess we can discuss it under resolutions. I'm sorry, I've got a little mixed up. Let's go ahead and go down to B, because we have acknowledged that we did have the discussion for the closed session. Okay, sorry. Too many meetings.
It does feel that way.
Number four.
So you want me to do one B?
Yeah, do one B. Yes.
Sure, one B, the Brookside Apartments located on Frederick Avenue were, are, are going to be very closing right now. They are to be purchased by Wilco Companies. Wilco Companies also is the owner of the Johnson Shopping Center, which is located kind of somewhat across the street by Silver Creek. And they have let us know that upon closing, they will be getting those units ready for rental and they are to be rented at market rate, but additional apartment style housing within Kensington, which, you know, the county and the town is very eager to get online. There's some hope that that could happen, you know, as soon as October. And that the other big name change or thing is that there will be a name change and they are, have put forth to change it from Brookside Apartments to the Glen at Kensington.
And we don't have a opening yet. I don't think they have applied for a sign permit, but, because I've already had some, some, a resident who's inquired about renting.
They, correct, they are not leasing yet. Part of what they're working on is putting together the floor plans of all of the units and getting all of the information unit by unit to have that ready. I did speak to one of the representatives from Wilco, who would love our assistance to put the word out through the Town List serve and through our channels. So as soon as leasing information is available, he is set to send it to me and I will get it to you and Carrie Anne and we will get that information out to our neighborhood as quickly as possible.
Council, does anybody have any questions? Welcome. Anybody in the audience have a question? Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Do we know how much the sale price was? I mean, this could be public record. Do we know how much they sold it for?
Not yet, because it's still in the process of closing, so it has not yet become public.
Are you aware of any plans? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, ask again in October, Joe, and we probably have that number.
Do we know if they have any plans to expand the complex there? Because there is some property sort of towards Kent Street that I think they, they would own too.
No, they have no plans to expand at this time. I mean, can't say what they'll do in 10 years, but it's also in a floodplain, so they would have some issues with that.
And do we know what kind of capacity that, that complex has, total number of apartments?
Andrew, it's like 41, is that sound right?
I was gonna say high 30s or around 40.
Yeah.
You mean total apartments to be rented? That could be.
Total, total units, correct, Joe?
Okay, so anybody else has any questions regarding this? Okay, all right, we'll move on to number two. This came up to us about a fundraiser for the American Society of Breast Surgeons Foundation race. And they would like to close the streets, which would require, you know, probably bringing in staff and, and we have a map, so it's, it is about, what is it, 90 minutes, Matt, that they would require?
Yeah, roughly 90 minutes. Andrea Guild with Blue Cheetah Timing, who is actually going to run the race
Yes.
for the organization is with us this evening to answer any questions. And Andrew, if you'd like to kind of give an overview of the race for the mayor council?
Sure, so we're working with, with Ryan Cleese, who's also on the call. And I work for Blue Cheetah Sports Timing and we're a full-service race management company. And so we, we would be the timers for the event and we would also be doing the course layout on the course map. I sent the map over to, over to Matt a few weeks ago. It would be a double loop of various streets within the community and I can share the, I can share the map and the turn by turn at any time if anyone would like to see it, starting and finishing at the Baby Cat Brewery, where they're going to have their post-race celebration. We'd be setting up some time, so good.
I was just gonna say, Alex, would you be able to put that up on the screen? We all received a copy of it in our documents. It might be helpful to have that on the screen.
Give me one second.
That's fine. I'm sorry, didn't think to warn you about that.
No, it's okay.
Well, while that's getting done, we'd be setting up all of our equipment in the parking area at the Baby Cat Brewery. We're expecting maybe 200 to 250 participants for this event. And then prior to the race, either the night before or that morning, depending on the weather, we will be doing some marking out on the course to, in order to make sure that people proceeded in the right direction and didn't, didn't get lost on the course. We'd be using a combination of chalk and tape and cones and arrows and things like that. We'd leave no permanent markings on the road whatsoever. We don't use any kind of spray paint. And then once the race was completed, after about approximately one hour, hour and 15 minutes of actual race time, we'd be going out and clearing, clearing everything out off the roadway.
Andrea, do you have, do you have actually physical volunteers at certain intersections?
Those will be supplied by the, by the, by the Breast Surgeon Foundation, but we do intend to have physical people at certain points, key points along the course. We call them course marshals. They would be wearing reflective vests and waving very visible flags for that, for that period of time.
Okay, because not every driver respects a barricade.
Oh, don't I know it?
Council, do you have any questions for Andrea? Any concerns? Obviously, the town would have to provide information to the residents along the course to make sure they are aware of it. Because you, we definitely, and that means pretty much door-to-door letter that hopefully Matt would share it with their spouse or other drivers within their house. That's.
Sure, I have a few questions. One, Andrew, just for the benefit of everybody, I'll be honest, I'm not a runner. Double loop, I assume means we're doing it once and we're doing it again?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
That takes less real estate within the town and it just kind of keeps it in a, in a fairly confined area.
Yep. What time of day do you anticipate roads closing and then roads reopening?
Well, when I originally submitted this to Matt, we were looking at an 8:00 AM start on this race, which would mean the roads would be closing, you know, probably between 7:30, 7:45 and then reopening approximately one hour after the start time. Ryan Cleese requested a later start time on it, just to accommodate the, the sort of after celebration with Baby Cat Brewery. We'd like, he would like to move it to a later, a later time period in the day, maybe starting at 9:00 AM rather than at 8:00. You know, but certainly if, you know, I do understand that later in the day is, can be a little bit more disturbing to the town residents. So, you know, if we could do it at nine, that would be great, but if we have to stick with eight, then that would be fine as well.
I mean, one concern I just raised is that there's at least, you know, there's one church within the race zone. This is a race to be on Sunday morning, correct?
Yes, it is a Sunday morning, yep.
Tracy, you know more about that church than I do. It's how much of an impact is that?
Well, they have a service that starts at nine, so that would be, you know, an issue for them. And then at 10:30, so you know, that, I mean, it's gonna be, it's just, what are races for the 8K, the Kensington 8K, that starts pretty early. That's like 7:00 AM, is that right, Matt? And the last one's at like 8:30?
Correct, yes.
And those streets are opened pretty quickly once they're, the last race goes through.
That's on a Saturday as well.
Yeah, it's on a Saturday. Which, yeah, aren't you is busier?
Right, it may be, my, my concerns, just looking at this, are two, well, maybe a few. One is what to do with St. Paul's Methodist Church. It's a Sunday morning. People coming across street and racers, right? Like, how is that thought through? Second is with 200 to 250 people participating potentially, where are they parking? The third would be with the race route in a double loop. That means that obviously this whole area, you know, depending on how the runners get spread out, there's no real time to allow for opening the course safely, right? And there's a bunch of people that are within that, the whole race loop, Fawcett Street, half the circle that really could not exit, couldn't leave during, I mean, maybe they're not getting up because it's early, but like, there's no way for them to get out to go anywhere.
Everybody inside that box can't get out.
Correct.
And, and you forgot, besides the church, there's Safeway that also gets.
And we have the one church inside of it, but there are many, many churches outside of it that people may be trying to get to during that time, right? They're kind of, they're, they're now going to be locked in that area.
So, I mean, Connor, I'm not a runner either, but I'll, you know, time in. How long does it take to run a 5K? Is it like half an hour, 45 minutes?
Um, most people can complete that distance within 45 minutes. You know, some people finish it as, as little as under 20 minutes.
Right. I mean, so I, I get that it's a, it's a, you know, an inconvenience. But it's a fairly limited duration one. So I, I don't know, I don't know what we think about it. In fact, we're, we're more familiar with the 8K, which is like two weeks or so before this one.
I believe, I believe it's the week before, yeah.
Oh, the one week before?
I believe so.
No, it's the 23rd, I think.
Is it? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
24th, maybe.
Yeah, it's the, it's not, it's the, it's not the last weekend in September.
The 23rd. It's the 23rd, yeah.
23rd, yeah.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I think it has a lot more participants, but we're doing things for it, like shutting down a lane of Connecticut Avenue.
No, we don't. Down Connecticut Avenue. We don't shut down the lane of Connecticut Avenue for the 8K.
I haven't been in a while. I thought we used to.
No.
Okay, and so we don't need to do anything at Baltimore where, where there's a corner?
No, they take a left at Baltimore and then head down towards Kensington Parkway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Generally, generally when we close down roads for a race, you know, it's not, particularly towards like the, the sort of latter part, as people start to spread out with a race of this size, the, while the road itself is going to be closed down, people can kind of come, come on the through streets, you know, if there, you know, if there's, say, a police officer there that would stop traffic from going, you know, from, from coming out when somebody was actively using the roadway, if there was a break in the, in the runners, as there would be in a race of this size, people could, could come, you know, come through that area. They wouldn't necessarily be going on those roads, but they would be able to use the cross streets.
But you mean like pedestrian crossings?
But yeah, the pedestrian, well, either pedestrian crossings or, you know, if, like I said, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm not really familiar with Kensington in and of itself, but, um, you know, if they needed to get across any of the main roads, they'd be, they should be able to do that when there are no, actively no runners coming through.
Yeah, I guess my concern is vehicles. If somebody tries to take a vehicle out across the course.
We also have the, the delivery trucks, you know, they take some forever to come down Armory Avenue to back into Safeway. Was there any reason why some of this race didn't go into Rock Creek Hills, the neighborhood next door?
Um, I, I was, I was, I mean, when putting together this course, I was just working, you know, working with, with streets within the town of Kensington as, 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 as I was requested to do, so.
Okay, because, I mean, the 8K and the other, the other race that we do, the, the neighborhood next to us shares the burden of these close, these close.
It's also not just sharing the burden, it makes it easier because for the most part, the 8K races are there and back, so it doesn't box people in and circle a lot of residential units, so. I mean, maybe even taking the, the 8K course and just transforming it into a 5K could be a way of doing it to not box people in.
I can certainly take a look at doing that. We're looking at a date of, of October the 9th and we could, you know, I, we could certainly look at, at changing that. I don't know if that's, if that's something, you know, would be, would be able to accomplish that in that short amount of time.
I had a similar, similar question. I was trying to find the 8K map and couldn't find. You do? Okay. Because I do think it's challenging. People are, are used to the 8K, obviously, if you did a lot of publicity, that could help with preparing people, but the challenging part of this course is that blocked-in loop that, that Connor and, and others are referring to and not being able to get out. I just had a situation with a neighbor who couldn't get out of her driveway because she was blocked in and had to cancel all of her plans, so I think people are sensitive to, to that.
Let's see. Connor, I'm going to send you this because I'm not up on the latest Zoom. Maybe you can share it.
Yeah, I've got the map up. You just want me to show it?
Oh, yeah, go ahead and show it.
Yep.
Yeah, and as you're looking at it, you can even, if you don't want to mimic it, there's, I mean, there's this separated bike path that goes to Long Beach Drive too, that you could even utilize if you go all the way down Kensington Park, what Parkway to Beach Drive, like they have here.
Kensington Parkway? I'm sorry, Andrea, I don't know.
Listen, where do folks park for this?
They're given like multiple choices of places to park. So, ours is, the 8K is on a Saturday, so they, you know, they park at the church, they park at Town Hall, they park at the Baker's Union, they park at the Housing Opportunities Commission on Dietrich Avenue, which is the west side.
Most people walk.
Well, some do, but, but a lot of, you know, those that drive, because they're coming. Yeah.
I mean, certainly, you know, if, I mean, yeah, I, Ryan Cleese would, would have to do, we'd have to, you know, obviously make the decision on it as, as it's, you know, his race, but, um, I mean, certainly we can work with, we can work with this and do a kind of out and back course on that as well. I mean, if that, if that's, if that's something that the committee would approve doing, we'd, we'd be happy to do that.
The, I will just, one good thing that was done with your course is that it is within the town of Kensington's jurisdiction in total, and that gives us the ability to control that. Changing your route, taking it outside of the town, especially along the Parkway, that's under the control of county and parking planning. And that is going to add to your bureaucracies that need to be involved.
Yeah, yeah, I was certainly aware of that. I mean, it's, and honestly, the, I don't, I don't even know that we'd have time to deal with the county bureaucracy on that one, so.
This is Ryan Cleese here. Is it possible to do an out and back if we adjusted our loop, just bringing that all into just one line to go out and, and back that way?
Well, Connor, scroll down a page so we can look at the two-mile map.
No, you missed the link there.
There did seem to be a link that.
Yeah, there was. It's, yeah, right there.
Okay, so that obviously starts up by Town Hall. Okay, one mile there, one mile back. We need to get another, another mile and a half out of that, or a little bit more than a mile.
And this one does cross out of the town.
I mean, it stays on Kensington Parkway though, right?
It's, if you take Baby Cat from Baby Cat, if you take Kensington Parkway from Baby Cat all the way to the 495 overpass, it's one and a half miles. So you could have a turnaround somewhere in North Chevy Chase if you just wanted to stay along Kensington Parkway. Because you need 3.1 miles, right?
Correct. Yep.
It's all flat, too.
You must be a runner.
But it's all flat.
Basically, instead of, instead of starting where, where it has end right there, you're, you're talking about starting with, starting at Baby Cat from there?
Well, I was told that starting and finishing at the same location is, is a good idea. Is that right?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would say starting at Baby Cat.
And then Andrea, if you look on the Kensington 8K website, you can see there are listed parking locations. Though a couple of those, as was noted, were churches and would not be available on a Sunday morning.
But they would have the mark station because it's not Farmer's Market Day, which is nice.
Yeah, and the post office.
Yeah. We're considering parking, so. Can you go back to that two-mile map a second or, and let me grab a, let me just grab an image of it? Thank you.
Andrea, I'll, I'll send you the maps.
I appreciate it, thank you. I can definitely work something out from that.
I don't, I don't think you'd have too much problem getting the okay to use Kensington Parkway all the way down. That's just one road.
And is that, does that have to go through the county, Kensington Parkway?
Yeah, and once you get out of, out of the town, you would, but.
And where is it? Right at that Littledale Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, this little dash line is our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Does Silver Creek Middle School, do they have a field with a running track?
They have a walking track around this upper grass field, but not like a traditional like track and field track, correct?
I was saying, you could run up there and then run around the track a couple of times.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a possibility too. And that, that'd be an additional permit we would do through you for.
No, that would also be through the county, but I don't, I, you know, I think it depends on how you know, how many people you have up there as far as, you know, looking like it's official. You might be able to just run up there and nobody will bother you. I don't know.
I don't know what the weekend situation is at the school. A lot of schools are locking their, their tracks.
Yeah, this isn't a track track. This is as you come right here to their driveline, this little dashed line here is like, it's this, it's a walking footpath. It goes by the, the south side of Kensington, the Kensington Retirement Community here.
Kensington Park.
Yeah, and it just hugs the, the building and the parking lot.
I think we're in agreement. We're, we're very concerned about blocking people in as much as you were original, so if you could try to tweak that.
Absolutely, yeah, I will tell, take a look at, at, at putting something like.
How do you do?
Workable.
Okay. Council, do you, and I just want to clarify, I think you said the 9th, but it is October 8th, is that?
Probably 8th, yes, I'm sorry, yes, it's, it's the 8th, yeah.
That's okay, I'm glad, I'm not the only confused person. Um, Council, do you have any other further questions for Andrea and Ryan?
Since we don't meet again until the 11th, is this something where we can, you know,
Sign off on?
Matt's hands to.
Well, I, yeah, I think we're gonna have to put it in Matt's hands and we could certainly send out. Well, I, yeah, I think we're going to have to put it in Matt's hands and, uh, we could certainly send out, um, once you provide the, uh, route. To the council and then we can get it out to the, to the residents. So we don't want to wait too late. Maybe in, uh, two weeks, maybe by the.
Yeah, that should be no problem. I've got a real busy weekend coming up, but after that I have some time to, uh, to take a look at that and we should be able to work something out. Absolutely. I do appreciate that, by the way, being able to, uh, work, work around your schedule. So.
Well. Um. Matt, does that work for you?
Yeah. And Andrea, I'll send you the, the maps for the eight K race and, um, touch base next week. So.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Um, and anybody in the audience have a question?
Uh, well, this, this is Ryan Cliche. I just want to say thank you all so much for, um, your willingness to, to hear us out and your, your flexibility and. Um, the opportunity to, to host us here in Kensington. I'm hoping this, this turns into a, a great, uh, annual event.
Once we work the kinks out, everything will be, there'll be so much.
Good cause. Uh, the one thing that might be nice is to push it maybe a little further away from our eight K, which is usually the third weekend in September, just so. Um, we don't disrupt, you know, the residents too often.
Yep. So, sounds good.
Yeah. Anyway. Okay.
Thank you everyone. And, uh, so I'll be in touch with, uh, with, with, with a new route as soon as I can and, uh, hope to see you all the race.
Great. Thank you. Maybe us to be running. I don't know.
Run, you could just show up and cheer everybody on. We'll.
Okay. Nate and Dan are probably our runners in this group. So.
I'm the only one, I think.
Darren, I will, Darren, I will meet you at the finish line.
I'll be holding the beer. At nine in the mornings. So. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. Okay, council, uh, item number three, I don't see, um. The person who started this, uh. Alex, you wanna, you wanna say why we're talking about this or that you received this gentleman's? Uh, it. Information Nicholas?
Sure. Yes. I had a gentleman named Nicholas reach out to me last month and he said he was interested in having, um, an antique market in the town. And, uh, he was deciding between a few locations. Uh, some of them didn't work, the train station because of the farmer's market. Um, the, the church, he suggested a few private lots, possibly closing down streets, but he's hoping to have this, I think bi-weekly. Um, and he said he's had markets in other locations and he was interested in having one in the town.
So, um, I asked Nicholas to provide information, further information, kind of a proposal. So we had something to look at. Um. Uh, as Alex said, um, there is, you know, the Saturday. Uh, you know, and the farmer's market is obviously not going to work. Post office is not going to work because they're open. Um, we're certainly not going to be closing down streets every other week. So, um. As far as doing it on a private lot, that's between him and the property owner. So, um, I wish. Nicholas was here to talk further about it, but I think he was. In need of, um. The council to chime in versus just staff telling him that it probably wasn't going to work, except through a private property owner that wanted to take it on. So. But if the council has any questions, staff or I can try to answer it.
I mean, I will speak. I have questions that, um, I mean, I just think it's something that we. Can share the staff can share that information with him that if he can find a private lot and come back, but. Unless he's here to present it and go through it with us, I think it's something we just leave off and move to a future agenda when he's available.
Okay. Well, I, I think. My personal opinion though, is I think I'd rather have staff though. Let him know that. Closing streets is not an option, particularly the other, especially if this is a, uh, profit type of thing for him. Um, closing our streets does, as we just talked about, requires, you know, staff to get involved and that can't, can't happen. Um. So I just want to be clear when he does re-contact the, so staff can maybe lead him a little bit more. Uh, than just having him come back and. Um, kind of go over what we're, we're reading right now. I mean, I just don't think. Other than just making that, um, deal with a, um, private property owner, I don't see how anything else that he has proposed will work.
Yeah, I, I guess. I agree with Connor that we should talk about it. If, I mean, if he wants to go and present it, yes, I understand you want to give that staff direction. I just. I'm a, I'm, I'm not actually quite sure what. What vintage clothing is because he talks about it as like secondhand. Clothing. Um, so is it, is it just, is it consignment, like a consignment shop that is meant to be? And like a market in, in which case I would be concerned a little bit that we already have some consignment businesses that are not benefiting from our. Support by providing a space for them to do it.
I'm kind of visualizing like an eastern market type thing where somebody has collections of items and then they bring them in and they sell them. So that's, if you've been to eastern market, that's kind of what I'm visualizing. But yeah, he's not here to, to really fully, but I, I also don't like the idea particularly. You know, putting, you know, allowing them to use the street for free. Um, and then the other, you know, our other merchants are paying rent and not getting the benefit of, um. So, I mean, A, there's no way we would close the street, I don't think, without charging something, but, uh, especially with staff and, uh, bringing in public works. This is not a town event.
Right. I completely agree with that directing staff. I don't. Foresee closing streets or using public space for this as it's a ongoing private market where, you know, we would be providing essentially is. The real estate to do it. Um. A one-time event would be an interesting concept I'd like to hear about, but a recurring open air market. Uh, that's in direct competition with our local business district is something that I've. I would have trouble supporting.
Unless they're invited to participate in it.
Uh, that was what I was going to say is that I, when I first read this, I thought it was going to be something done with the support or participation of. Local merchants because we have an antique row. How could we, you know? Not have them. And, and so I guess I would take a different, a, a more positive view of this concept. If it included the support and participation of the, 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 the local current merchants.
Uh, you know, another option too, is actually renting town hall for a one-time event. You know, maybe once a year, um, maybe twice too, but you would have to rent town hall and you could use it as a, because we've done that in the past where we've had. People get tables and we have like a indoor yard sale. So it could be similar to that, only he's would be renting the building, bringing in the items. Possibly inviting people, you know, in our business community to bring items in too. I think that would work. Um. Um, I, you know, I just visualize people bringing a lot of stuff out into a parking lot and it starts to rain and then what do you do? So, um. So that, that is actually something, you know, we could suggest to him as well. It's just renting town hall.
And, and the town parking spaces if they want to be outside.
Right, right. That, that would. Yeah. Well, I just want to share, I'd had the same reaction that, um, Darren did. That was my first thought, you know, what engagement has there been with the local business community? And given, um, that we have a number of vintage resellers and a number of, um, different wares, it would seem. Important that there be conversations with them and, um. We'll see if, if the Nicholas wants to go that route, but it would seem the right thing to do. Okay. Well, I think if he were to make a private deal with a property owner, then, you know, he would be under, I don't think any obligation to invite, we would like him to, but to invite other. Uh, businesses to be part of that. Um, but. You know, if you were to rent town hall, you know, it could be the same thing, but I think anything out on our streets, then he, he would, and which I don't think we're in favor of anyway. He would definitely have to include our businesses and something like that on public property. So, okay, um. Alex and Matt, do you have kind of a gist if he gets back in touch with us on what we're looking at?
I'll redress them tomorrow and just give them a summary of what you talked about.
Okay. And he's, you know, if he wants to come back, I don't, I'm not going to put it back on a, on the agenda, but if he wants to come back and bring it under public appearances, he's certainly. Welcome to do that, but hopefully some of these alternative. Options he can work on that on his own. Okay. Anybody in the audience have a question about that? Okay. Not seeing anybody. All right. Thank you. Um, all right. We'll move down to, uh, these, if, uh, any of the council wants to make, uh, reports. Um. Connor, you want to start?
Yeah, it's just a quick one, um, just to keep people updated. So we have the technical assistance panel with ULI. Now, it seems like a month ago, um, a little bit longer than that, uh, just to keep people updated. So they've taken all of that input. They are compiling it into a draft report. Um, we'll get with them on that draft report over the next several weeks. Just, there's a number of things on their calendar. Um, and so we will continue to report out at the October meeting on the status of it. Um, you know, once we get an update from ULI.
Um, Nate?
Yes. So just two quick updates. First is on sustainable Kensington. We're still waiting to hear whether we've achieved bronze status. We, we will hopefully know by the next meeting, fingers crossed. Um. And then from the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group, we are in the middle of doing the planning for our Walktober event, our annual Walktober event. And that will be. October twenty eighth, the announcement, I think will be going out any moment now. Um, it'll be touring some of the recent improvements, uh, some areas that need improvement. Uh, for pedestrian bicycling connectivity and safety. Um, this year we'll have another shirt made. Uh, this time the shirt will not actually have the year on it so that we can recycle them and reuse them. Uh, and as an added bonus, we discussed at the last town council meeting. We are engaging our business community, uh, more so in this, in this year's event by partnering with them. Uh, and offering vouchers essentially that the town will provide to, um, walk, bike or roll. Um, to the, onto one of the businesses. So we're working with Kensington Can to provide like a five, we're thinking about doing like a five dollar. Um, discount coupon that can be, uh, taken by the business and then the town will reimburse them. Uh, or $10 if they actually say that they've walked, biked or rolled. So as a little incentive to actually get out and walk and, and use our businesses. So. Amy from Kensington Can is in the process of, uh, soliciting who's interested. So we'll make a little map of, of the participating. Uh, businesses, but to me it's a no-brainer. It's, it's not their, their funds necessarily that they're giving it out. So the town's. Uh, going to be providing some of that support. We anticipate about, um, you know, thirty, forty people max, but, uh, but it's always a good event. So if you can make it, come out, the rain date is October twenty ninth.
Great. Okay. Uh, Anne? Thank you. I just wanted to share that we did have a really nice, uh, back to school block party. Um, bef- right before school started and a huge thank you to our business community Kensington Can really. Um, as they always do, came up with some wonderful, um, prizes for the kids. Um, it was a very nice event. I want to thank them for, for their support as well as the town staff support for that event. And then I was going to bring up the Kensington eight K, but we already started talking about that. Um, but I will still bring it up. It is September twenty third. Um, many of you know, it's a huge fundraiser for our schools and our programs. So really encourage people to get involved. There are still some volunteer slots that need to be filled. Um, and hope that people will, um, find a way to support this year's eight K. Yeah, that's, it's one of my favorite events and, and, uh, I get to be there right at six in the morning to set up the sound equipment. So. I get an early start. I love that. You at seven, I'm doing parking lot direction. Boy, okay. Well, I'll tell you, uh, Kensington Ken's getting a lot of praises. Uh, it makes me want to go on the town website to the swag and order a Kensington Ken sweatshirt. So I think I'd be proud to wear that because they're such a great, great organization, always willing to help out. So, uh, Darren?
I don't have anything. Come on.
Okay. Um, the other thing I'll bring up is, uh, last night I, I went up to, uh, to Wheaton. They were having, I was invited to go to the drone first responder. Uh, community meeting. Uh, it's a pilot program. Um, the DFRs, uh, that, uh, Montgomery County Public, uh, Police Department is, uh. Getting, uh, asking for funding from the county council to try out, um. The drones would kind of like a first responder to a nine one one call. So they would, uh, there, the pilot area would be Silver Spring, Wheaton. Uh, Glenmont up to, um. Aspen Hill, uh, Kensington is right on the, right on the, uh, the line of where they might, um, do this, uh, pilot program. So it might spill into Kensington. Um, so that's why I went, but it sounds like a very interesting program. There, there was, uh, it was a big community turnout. They were talking about, uh, fentanyl. Um, issues before. So that was a interesting discussion and very discouraging within our county, but, um. There were a lot of people that were, uh, concerned about the privacy issues, um, and how they would be using the, uh, video, um. And then of course we're in a, 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 there's a big restricted area of flying in Montgomery County. So. They are required to get waivers from FAA to fly these. There'd be two drones, uh, in this, um. Uh, pilot program and, um, but it's mainly going to be used to just when they get a nine one one call of something, obviously outside. Um, they can send it over really quickly and hopefully, um, the pilots who are also police officers can kind of evaluate the situation. And so that the police that are coming, you know, by car have a better idea of what they're coming into. So, um, they visited, uh, Santa Monica, California, who uses the drones in their policing and, uh, feel like it's worth giving it a try. So. It's just something to add to their toolbox. Um, I know, um, I've had a lot of, um, we've had some incidents in the town where, you know, police response is extremely slow. And, um, so I, I would encourage our residents, you know, if they. You know, call the non-emergency number. Don't call nine one one just because somebody's parked across your driveway or something like that. Just it's. The police are really, really shorthanded right now and it's, um. Uh, we're not at crisis point, but every meeting I've gone to, this is really being pushed out that they, um. They're no longer backing up. Uh, well, they are backing up, but they're no longer adding police to, uh, Rockville and Gaithersburg. Because they already have their police force, but they had an agreement that Montgomery County would also, you know, be there, you know, um. Helping to do the police, but they're not doing that anymore. They'll back up if necessary, but they're not going to be policing within the Rockville and Gaithersburg area. So, um. I think we just need to, uh, so I, I, you know, I support anything that they can, if it helps in the toolbox, that's great. So, but it was a very interesting discussion and, um. I did pick up some information about fentanyl. I don't, I don't have kids in school, but I don't know whether. You guys, Anne, I don't know whether Walter Johnson has a program on something like that. I mean, it hits all the schools. It's not just up in. The weekend. Yeah. MCPS has done several community awareness events with tools and training for parents. Uh, and community members. I have not made it to one of those events, but the school has also distributed. Uh, information for how to talk to your kids. Um, and so I know I've been in a number of conversations with other parents, but obviously anything that we can do to help raise awareness is, is important. Right, right. Okay. All right. Uh, Connor, next week Connor and I are going to meet with, uh, council member Kate Stewart. Uh, we're going to, um, just talk about, uh, some issues, uh, particularly, um, parking, um, and some. Other items, uh, on our agenda. And then Kate's actually going to be coming back to, um, to our meeting in October. She's going to be our guest in October. So, um. And, um. Anyway, so there's some, some items that we're going to talk to her about. All right. Uh, any questions for the council regarding anything that we brought up? Okay. Not seeing any hands. So we will move on. Uh, from the. Um, okay, we're going to go down to, uh, town manager and staff, Matt, regarding, uh, S H A.
Yeah. Uh, Mary Council, uh, we received a vegetation plan, uh, from the state highway administration for the medians along Connecticut Avenue. Uh, we were advised last month, uh, by S H A to remove our existing plantings, uh, so they can move forward with their planned scheduled. Um, vegetation plan, uh, which was proposed a number of years ago. And they are just now getting around to it. Um, they're pretty far behind from COVID. Um, you received the planting schedule and we were told probably. He received the planting schedule and we were told probably mid-October to November they would begin to proceed.
Well, let, let's be clear, when they, when they did the planting median um, or got that plan, um, first they put in the little median with the stamped block. And then they were supposed to replace the others, so you could put plantings in it. This was back when Pete was mayor. And they didn't do it, they didn't do it. And we tried to get him to do it, nope, didn't do it, didn't do it. Then one day they just showed up and did it and then I was mayor. And then instead of plantings, it's no, we're not doing any plantings. So they just laid down uh the grass with all the string in it. And of course, that didn't take. And then asking the town crew to mow grass in the middle of Connecticut Avenue once a week was ridiculous. And then wind came up and all the string just came, it was like a tumbleweed. So the crew rolled it all up. And then we bought the inexpensive, you know, uh, plantings of the grasses in the median. Now all of a sudden they want to do plantings. And part of that is they're uh putting in plantings to help discourage people from crossing in the middle of the um between the, the two streets, the cross streets. So in the middle of the block. I don't know that's going to work because if they don't put something in that's big with, with big thorns, people are just going to stomp on it. So I'm, I'm a little skeptical. But um, we can find other locations for the grasses that we planted and um, so, but they're supposed to do it in what, in October?
Yeah, we were asked to have our grasses out by October fifteenth. And we were told that they'd start a couple of weeks after that, probably go into November.
And the downside, of course, is they're not going to maintain it. So um, they're just going to plant whatever they plant. And then just walk away. So.
I know I'm asking the obvious question. Is there something wrong with the grasses that we have already planted?
I, I don't think so. Uh, we could actually plant more if that's what they're looking for. But I know when Jason planted it, people just stomped on them to cross in a certain area. So I mean, literally unless you put thorns, I, it's just, I, it's mind boggling to see little old crossing in the middle now of Knowles Avenue, instead of going to the light. We just cross, you know, four lanes of Knowles Avenue to get to the Silver Creek Apartments. I mean, this is like my big thing now. And then or cross from the Liberty Station or now Sunoco to cross over to the Safeway. I mean, it's just mind boggling that people do this.
I mean, why, I I guess my first question is do we have, is there anything to really discuss? Because is there a decision to be made? We don't have.
No, I mean, it was more informational. So when you see the crew pulling up the grass, you know why?
If it's also to solicit input to be a back to SAJ, if they're asking for our feedback, I'll say rather than spending time and money to discourage people from crossing mid-block, they should be investing in the solutions that we know we've identified for encouraging walking and encouraging better crossing by adding crosswalks. Pedestrian scale lighting and, and the tree canopy uh and, and the grass buffers. It's, you know, this is something that we've talked with them about. It's in all of our, the recent studies and the plans that we've done. So I think that's a key message we could take back to them is please invest in the, in, in not just median to obstruct people from crossing in the middle, give them better places to cross and a better environment to walk along the streets.
Is there any way, I know you've spoken to them, Jason spoke to them. Is there any way of speaking to Joseph or someone else?
Yeah, so we spoke, we spoke to Kim, um, who oversees our vegetation management program. We requested to keep the grasses and have them plant the new plantings in between the grasses. And they asked us that we just proceed to remove. And just to kind of clarify, there are a number of items that were promised to the town prior to twenty twenty. This is one of the items. So they, between this, um what they did on Connecticut Avenue northbound where they put in the paddle boards, they're going to extend the turn lane on Pliers Mill. These are all items that were promised to the town in around twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. They're trying to clean those up um, and get those taken care of for us. The prior engineer with State Highway for our district had moved on and, and things got lost and COVID came. So they're trying to clean everything up for us with that. We can reach out to Derek Gunn on this. I, I mean, I'm not opposed to what they're doing, honestly. Uh, it's a little unfortunate that we have to remove our grasses, but this is something that we did talk with them about about four or five years ago.
Four or five years ago? Well, we're still waiting for the rapid beacon, which uh Joseph had promised before the end of this year. I mean, he technically still has four more months to go. You know, or three and a half. Um, but you, you know, they're not going to do it in November.
Yeah, the rapid flash and beacon, um, in my last conversation with Joe is it's ready to go. Uh, they're waiting for the installation. So it's been approved. They're waiting for the installer. And Joe told me to stay calm, it's coming, so.
They're treating the other improvements further south on Connecticut, um, in the northbound lane of Connecticut, in front of um Steve Cohen's house, that they're still, they're treating that separately, but still a part of this. They're, they're not going to do that in October, November either.
No, they, they're doing the evaluation for that. They're supposed to send us a thirty percent design for the sidewalk ADA improvements for South. Where Mr. Cohen lives. And then we'll have that and we'll provide that to the residents. It does affect a number of them between Baltimore Street and Calvert Place. So we'll, we'll make that public, bring it to a council meeting so everyone's aware what the proposal is from SHA.
But I, I do appreciate the fact that they're cleaning up promises, but you know, when something is five years old, six years old, it's you know, you might want to check back with the community to just confirm that you still want that. I mean, it's just, um, or had something changed. I just think it's um it's, it's unfortunate that um you know, that they can't add to the grasses or, you know, I mean, it's just um I don't know, um, it's, it's frustrating. You know, as Nate said, we have other alternatives that we've talked about and wouldn't it be nice to use that money for those instead? So.
And you're saying you're frustrated by the fact that this document was created in two thousand twelve? And last revised in twenty fifteen?
Something like that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it, this is, this is not pandemic. This is old. I mean, this is really old. It really has nothing to do with the pandemic.
Rapid flash and beacon was twenty seventeen.
And they're lucky we, we now just want one instead of two. There were supposed to be two and they, we got the four way stop instead. Which we'd still be waiting for that one, a second one. So, or the first and the second. So anyway. Okay, so that was more just of an FYI. There's nothing we can do here, but see, buddy, have any questions regarding that?
The only thing I would say, Matt, as much as we have any control over SHA or we can provide some valuable insight. If they can do this non-peak travel time, since I presume they're going to close one, if not two lanes of Connecticut to be working in the median, just to avoid, you know, AM rush hour, PM rush hour.
They do have, there are at least two paddles that have been broken. They're sitting there in front of um, Mr. Wash or Car Wash Coffee.
I saw one of them go down in a amazing attempt at a U-turn. That somebody really wanted to get south. You saw, oh, I've, I've seen the, the backup on Connecticut the last couple of nights has produced an unbelievable amount of un, like just ridiculous driving that I've witnessed between cutting through parking lots, um, cutting over some curbs. Um, I'm a little surprised at what some of these little Kias can do, but they're versatile vehicles. But yeah, it's, the angst over traffic is kind of back.
Yeah, well, you said it took in an earlier meeting we had today, you said it took thirty minutes to get from your house to Saul?
To Saul, thirty-five minutes to get from my house to Saul. And, and part of that is, and then the last three mornings, um going south just to get to four ninety-five because they are closing lanes at Chevy Chase Lake. The backup is to Saul or further, like you see it as you're coming over the hill at Franklin. Um, and it, you know, this morning it took me twenty-five minutes just to get from Franklin on to four ninety-five.
Too bad you can't take a drone. I'll make it easier. Oh, well, okay. All right, so uh, let's move on to uh, Matt, do you or Susan have anything else or Alex?
Uh, Councilmember Crimmins, do you want to mention the conversation that you, uh, Town Attorney Ferguson and I had with Bill Commoners?
Sure. So Bill Commoners, a land uh use attorney and uh Bert Donahoe, who is the, let's call it redevelopment slash brokerage representative for the Bakers Union. They asked to come in and discuss things that we would like to see within the Bakers Union property, and that is because they are wanting and in need of the town removing the covenant that is currently on their property. As well as they are, you know, interested in using what is referred to as, I think, our parcel A, that, that our parcel that is along Connecticut Avenue with any potential redevelopment of the Bakers Union. They are going out and marketing the property for redevelopment. So this was an informal solicitation of our our input into, you know, we were king for a day, what, what do we think would fit within our sector plan? And so largely our feedback was housing is something that the town is very much in need of, different forms of housing. And in that regard, given the residential nature on two parts of the, you know, along Mitchell and um uh Armory that, you know, a townhouse community that you know, faced Connecticut Avenue and circulated down Knowles with some mechanism for parking it in, in an interior, but with properly scaled things that, that fit our sector plan would, you know, be probably, this was my singular point, I thought, would be very well received. We did also give them our concerns and our concerns are you know, something that is overly dense uh by virtue of using any of the ZTAs within the county. Create circulation, parking related issues, servicing issues. Things like a, a lay-by lane uh for Connecticut Avenue, we don't believe SHA would be in support of, nor possibly the town. Our concerns would be, you know, cut through traffic within the town to access the property. We did talk a little bit about retail, the, the reality of retail and office and that office is really um not a viable option. But um, I think that one thing we did convey is that we are very much in need of housing. And so if it were to be entirely housing and ha, not have a retail component that, you know, that is something that we would be willing to look at. But what we left them with is um the covenant will remain and our parcel A will remain in control by the town uh until such time as they want to bring forth a project that the town can fully support.
Any questions? Okay, any questions from the audience? Okay. So Matt, you're good? Okay. All right, so let's move down to ordinance resolutions and regulations.
Council, uh, you received, um you receive from uh Town Attorney Ferguson this evening, a lease, a proposed lease agreement for the flats at um Mill Station Project. Town Attorney Ferguson is here to answer questions. I know that there was a couple questions I at least know that Mayor had and Councilmember Crimmins. For Sue Ellen.
Yeah, let, let Connor go first. He, he had the um uh, several.
Yeah, it, it, Swollen, thank you first of all for getting us this draft so we could look it over. I have a couple and by a couple, maybe I'll try to keep it fewer than twelve items, just to bring up real quick. They largely have to do with making sure that we define what the spots are that are going to be used. And that that is, you know, clearly uh marked within this document. So for instance, in that opening witnesses paragraph, it talks that the location of the leased parking spaces is one full parking level within the premises. Um, as detailed in Exhibit A, there's not an Exhibit A to this, but I pulled the parking plan from E-plans. And one of the challenges we're going to have is that there is not I think our intent is to make sure that the uh, these spots are on the, what we would call the ground level that's accessible from the road. But that level does not have forty-eight parking spots. There is, to my count, as best we can get, there's thirty-eight parking spots. There are six additional spots on that level. They are tandem spots. I think that's another thing that we would like to identify is that tandem spots would not work for this public need because of how they would need to be somebody full-time to manage tandem spots. I think the, the landlord can make use of, of the tandem spots, but we wouldn't want tandem spots to be a part of it. So that would mean ten spots would need to be located elsewhere within the complex, presumably in the subgrade level. Which there are plenty of spaces available, but we would just need to work to identify which uh spots between the, the street level and the, you know, the upgrade level and the below grade level. Where these would be, and then obviously the appropriate signage and um wayfinding to get to those spots.
Okay, well, that's um something that's going to depend on also a conversation with them just to confirm that what's there is, it's what's still the case probably is. And then go walk through this.
Yep.
And see how many you can get on the ground level because that would be preferable, of course.
Right. Uh, my big one is, in the same paragraph, is just that the term for this is listed as fifteen years, which I know meets the minimum terms of the Legislative Bond Initiative. I think I'd, you know, I'd be open to hearing from the rest of the council. I think that, you know, a, a longer term, not substantially longer, but around twenty years. Maybe, you know, I'm interested in twenty years. I'd be i- interested in others' thoughts about that. So the point being, at the end of that period of time, our uh dedicated right to these spots for public parking expires and then the spots are returned to the landlord. The landlord then has full control to do what the landlord wishes with the spots. So I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on the, the term length? Yeah, and it?
I did, and I just, I had the same reaction why we were limiting ourselves to fifteen years from the get-go. I, my only other point besides the two that you raised, because I was also questioning which level, because it said a level. Is on the parking management issue. It says that we have the, um, we would have the option of putting up meters, but it doesn't say anything about enforcement, um, that we would have the right to enforce parking limitations or something like that. And I thought maybe that would be, would be necessary to have in there.
And so if I read this right.
Go ahead.
Because they, you know, the property owner is the landlord and we are the tenant. So it's really the property landlord has the right to put up a parking management system, pay for it, determine the rates. And if, and if they do that, obviously they would collect any revenue from that. If there's no parking management and we were to do parking enforcement with, you know, town parking enforcement uh personnel, then the revenues from that would go to the town, correct?
That's what it would be, yes.
But it says that we're the tenant, right?
Correct.
It says the tenant may install a parking meter system on the premises, it's not the landlord.
That's subject to um them agreeing to it.
It was. How Connor just described it, it sounded like the, the fallback is that the, that we would have the option of doing that unless we wanted to or sorry, that the landlord would have the option of doing that unless they wanted to cede it to us. But that, that's not how I read that. And maybe I'm just misreading it.
No, no, I may have misspoken.
Well, it depends on what you want. But this was to allow the town to enforce its own spots, assuming that it needed enforcement and using a meter. You can, you can enforce without a meter, but it's a lot harder because you have to start chalking things. So using a meter based on how much time, it also limits the time. Which isn't set yet in terms of how long you want people parking there, able to park there at one time. And so um the landlord always would have the ability, at least for the spots that are not leased, to have a parking control system. You're probably gonna want a parking control system. Otherwise, people are just gonna park in these spots, and you won't be able to do anything about it. So um, you know, it's, the town is gonna want that option. And uh we can expand on that a little bit more about the enforcement. My understanding from Matt is that the size would not allow for tow trucks or anything like that, but you could ticket it.
Yeah, and I guess my 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 main point was just whether we wanna write in there that we have s- we're we're allowed to have someone on the premises to do the enforcement, um writing tickets and so on if we need to. Because that's not in there yet.
I will um, I will do that. And uh explicitly, a question also, do you have a preference in terms of the landlord doing it, because then it's up to them to enforce it? Would you rather have first right to do it?
Personally, my opinion is yes, we want the first right, because it's more likely to be enforced that way.
Okay.
That's my, that's my personal opinion.
And I share that opinion. I think it's important that we preserve the ability to manage the parking and force the parking and collect the revenue, and I know that expense comes with that, revenue could come with that as well. And Sue Ellen, to your question about timing and all of that, that those feel like details that you know, later, once the building exists, we understand the use better.
That that is set out in there, that you will agree. Um it's an agreement to agree, which isn't really enforceable, but if you don't wanna pick a time right now, that's what you have to say.
Um just to join my colleagues, I agree with that right of first refusal as well. Couple of of other small points, uh Paragraph Three on rent. You know, it just says in there that that is the paragraph that um, you know, the rent will be paid under the circumstances stated in that paragraph. I only bring that up, the first witnesses is the paragraph where it talks about the certificates of use and other requirements before money is to be paid. I don't know if that needs to be in this paragraph, that that is our intent, that the monies from this bond initiative would be paid only once, you know, the the parking is built, it has a certificate of occupants in use, and it's essentially in a parking format.
Is worrying about um the fact that the I'm not clear on what you're saying. Right now, um at the first U N O involving the um uh an area that encompasses the garage also, is the commencement date for the lease. So that's the first U N O, which means it's built.
Mm-hmm.
That's commencement date as to when you get to use it. The um reimbursement can be earlier than that, but it's got to be reimbursement or paid directly to the contractor, one or the other, and we say that there. Um, because that's the rules that we have to go by under the House bills and the D G S requirements. So.
I'm not, yeah, my point is not to tell you. Okay.
I'll I'll look back, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I just the um the other thing I did not see in here, just because again, it goes to the legislative bond, the rules of the Legislative Bond Initiative. If the funds are not their language encumbered or expended within seven years and the money defaults back to the state, do we need or desire any language that would be a timeline shorter than that, say, five years, that if if the project is not substantially underway, or however you would want to word it, that would afford us time to redirect these bonds funds to a substantially similar project somewhere else in the town, so that they don't default and return to the state at the seven-year mark?
Well, that's not gonna, well, that piece is not gonna be up to the the landlord, I mean, if they're, they haven't done their project for the appropriate period of time, that we bring in the grant agreement by reference as Exhibit B. Uh there, he's not willing to sign it, I guess, but we're gonna bring it in anyway, because it does control what the town can do. And he's gotta recognize that. I can specifically reference, though, the requirement about when the monies have to be encumbered and spent by.
I just wanna make sure they were, you know, everything is as clear as it can be, day one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Um, I think I've just got two or three more. Um oh, just uh under Section eleven, there seems to be the end of a sentence and and the start of a sentence, but it looks like something's missing. Tenant shall indemnify and save and hold harmless employees and contractors, and then the next line starts from all suits. I, it may be an erroneous period in return, that's it there.
All right, I'll find it. It may, it may just be, oh, I see, yes, there's a period.
Yeah, okay, that's what I assumed. Yep.
Okay.
Um, and then let's see if I have anything. Oh, same, Section twelve. The second paragraph is one sentence, beginning with the word tenant. It ends with the word inspection and a comma. I don't know if that's supposed to be a period, or if there's a missing part of the sentence there, so.
I'll find it, I'll take a look at it again.
No problem. Uh and then lastly is, uh I think lastly, yes, uh Section thirteen is about signage. And it says that the tenant may install its sign, standard signs on the side of the building um that that direct people, right, to the parking. Is this something that we want to do, or do we want to put signage onto the landlord?
Oh, that's, that's an option either way. I put signage in there so that we remember to do it, one way or the other. If you're gonna wanna be able to direct folks to public parking, and you wanna be able to put it on the outside, if you want to, so that it can be seen easily.
Right.
And there males, and there is probably gonna be interior signage too that's needed. Um if you wanna ask for the landlord to pay for that and maintain it, um that's fine, I just didn't know which way you wanted to go there.
I will give my singular preference and then leave it, that will be my last comment, and then leave it for the uh other members to address, but I think it should be the tenants for two reasons. One, uh at the, I imagine that, I'm sorry, I believe it should be the landlord, because landlord is gonna want a cohesive sign package that, you know, flows with all the other signage that they are putting on their property. Um and then second, at at the end of the expiration, the signs go with the building. They just get transferred over according to this lease and become the property of the landlord, and so I would imagine the landlord's going to, you know, would prefer to have their own cohesive signage um within their property, and then, you know, wouldn't want anything that's branded Town of Kensington that after the expiration of the lease, they would then have to take down and and perhaps replace.
But just make it, the signage will be the landlord's responsibility.
Yeah, that's my preference, is just to put the the signage on the uh property owner. And that's all I, that's all I.
I was gonna, Connor, I was gonna put um Matt on the spot and ask him, from from a parking management perspective, if he had an opinion on the signage one way or the other.
I don't have a problem putting it on the developer. Um I, what I do like is if it's on us, we control it. Uh we we already have to do an upgrade to our public parking signs. Now, I think that's gonna happen before this project gets built, so I don't know if the council has any thoughts on that, or what we could do is give them guidelines during the process, when they put signage up, what we want for them, and just have them proceed with it. Already have guidelines in place for what we want for a public parking aspect for the garage.
We can just put in the lease that the signage that's gonna be put up is also subject to your approval.
Yeah, I mean, even within our sign regulations, there, they need to have a comprehensive plan, so maybe we can just get around the signage aspect with that, and just say the public parking needs to be coherent with everything else and 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 work it through our regular sign regulations.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I guess, to that point, to Ann's point, the biggest thing is, once they get inside of the parking deck, is it clearly marked, and is it plain and clear to drivers what spaces are public and which ones are not public? So I have no problem putting it on the developer, so long as that package gets reviewed and the town is in concurrence with it.
Sue Ellen, do you see any problems with us working on that through the comprehensive sign plan when they uh um file the permits with us?
They're starting from scratch. They're gonna have to get approval from that plan from the county also, right?
Right.
Will they be classified as directional signs, so they're not gonna require a county DPS permit? Uh unless they're advertising a specific unit or the building, if they're just directional signs for public parking, there's no permit required from the county. Um.
Okay, good, then yes.
Yeah.
That's compliant with the town. You're gonna have two two types of interest here. One is that it's consistent with their signage, as has been noted. The other is that it's it's clear and is put up in a way that the town agrees with, that's function. And I don't know what kind of signs you have for your meters.
We don't have meters.
Okay, so that's the way that parking is gonna be controlled in this garage. It's the only way to do it, really, unless you have it's just the only way to do it. You can't have a situation where you've got a card, because that means the gate has to go up and down for everybody. So I can't think of another way that you could do it without meters of some kind.
Yeah.
Mostly, they do the box meters now.
Right.
So you know, you have your, he said, paper, or you don't even have paper, the whoever's got the software can read it.
Well, we have time to figure out how we're gonna do that. I don't think we've thought that through, so.
But Sue Ellen.
Yeah.
To your question about um the the considerations that we care about related to the parking, you noted the landlords, and then on the town side, the approval of the parking signs, I think, Matt, what you're ref- referring to is, you would like a if we're redoing our public parking signage in the town, we're gonna try to signal a consistent look um to direct people towards public parking, so it's not just the location, but to sort of conform with that public parking signage plan of the future.
Sure, and I understood. The question is, the the main question was, is it, they're gonna gonna have to go through your full signage review, just like anybody else does, or not, and for interior signs, you really wouldn't do that inside the building, right? So um you could just require that any signage that's put up, that's relevant to the town's parking, be approved by the town, be run by the town, and just approved by the town.
I mean, it's typical, in a, in a, in a parking garage, you've got, you know, they have signs, tenant parking, public parking, visitor parking, so I mean, it's pretty simple. I don't think we're reinventing the wheel here, so.
No, and so we'll just say it has to, it's subject to your approval.
Okay. Um, any, any other comments, Nate or Darren? No? Okay, well, somebody's already with a good sense of humor is already uh redoing our uh public parking signs. It's now public barking in some spots, so we have to get the B off the sign.
Um as any of you who work with leases have noticed, this is a very unusual lease. You don't usually pay rent in this way. It's it's was kind of unusual to write it. And I think D G S is gonna have to be happy with the language too, so that's another um agency we have to get uh approval from. I don't think they see these very often, because I think most developers are willing to sign the grant agreement. Uh they seemed a little unsure about what it would look like too. So we'll just have to see if what we've put together, as we talked about this evening, amending it that way, is acceptable to them too.
Okay, and when you're talking about the state, and then we also have to talk about the uh the landlord as well.
Of course, and you're gonna get pushed back there, of course.
True. Okay.
So we'll see, this is just where we're gonna be, what the the town wants, and see what's, how it comes out.
Okay.
Um so but there's, there are some things that cannot be negotiated, and one of them is that the town is not allowed to provide funds unless it's reimbursement for something already uh completed and paid for uh by the recipient, uh or something that if it's not paid for yet, you're paying directly to the contractors that's done the work, and you have confirmed independently that that work has been completed.
Okay.
So that's that, and that's not, that's not individual or unique to this project. This is what I've seen all in other projects I've worked with.
And 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 just to confirm that we cannot put the funds into escrow or get the funds to put into escrow until a lease agreement is signed, correct?
Correct, so we need.
Yes, or the grant agreement, they're gonna want all that, the grant agreement signed, they're gonna want everything else in place before they'll do anything about this, but you're not allowed and actually, they may hold on to having the ability to spend. Because, you know, generally, they're reimbursing. I'm I'm not clear from the response that we got, that you'll be able to get the funds and put them in escrow.
Oh, okay.
When I've dealt with this before, it's been, it's always been direct. So of the town, it would be the town contracting for something to be done, and then either pay bill and then getting reimbursed for the cost, or having the D G S pay directly to the contractor who's done the work after the town certifies that the work's been done.
Okay.
And I don't know that they're gonna change anything about that. That's a follow-up question that we have to ask.
Okay.
Um on that point, Sue Ellen, with that question, um if it's a reimbursing a contractor directly for work that is completed, can you inquire how it works in a project like this, where, you know, the parking garage, parking deck would be completed substantially at the early part of the development, but isn't usable until the building above it is built and the certificates are issued? So it's are we, are fun, are we asking for reimbursements to contractors when they're done pouring the the slab and the, you know, and and the sheeting and shoring, or is it when there's actual certificates of use, which come at the completion of the project?
It's number one. As long as that work is going toward what you're asking for, be, you will want to be sure that any work that's being paid for is work that is gonna result in a garage. But other than that, it doesn't require the use and occupancy um permit for that, and we, I put that in as the marker, as the commencement date, but that's pretty far down the line. They're gonna want it probably before that, and so we we have to check with D G S is what's reasonable to expect here. Um, they're pretty responsive when it comes to particular aspects of a project uh as to how that project is gonna work. So I think we can get some answers as to what they're willing to do, because they're the ones that hold the money. They won't release it unless you comply with what they have to say.
And and that's absolutely fine, but I, what I don't understand, though, is since And, and that's absolutely fine, but I, what I don't understand though is since the grant was provided to the town or why? Why then would it go to the builder, not to the town and then to the builder?
The, it's one of two ways. It can go to the builder if the, the work. Has already been done, paid for, and is, they're getting reimbursed. Okay.
Right.
The town's not going to pay for this work. See, normally it's, it's direct. And the town would take one of two routes. Either you already paid the contractor. For the work that's already been done. And then you get reimbursed from the state. Or you, the state pays the contractor directly. After you confirm that the work has been done. Those are the two ways. We have a. You know, a second party here in the middle, the developer. But I don't see them changing any of that, so somebody's going to have to pay for the work first. To get reimbursed. Or it's going to go directly to the contractor that did the work. After the town certifies that the work's been done. I don't see how, you know, the fact that we have a third party involved here who's the developer. Who's not a party to the grant agreement, doesn't change what they would normally do.
Okay, well, it just, I've just been told that, you know, we would get the funds that would go into escrow. They could use that. Escrow money towards securing their loans, but it sounds like that's not an option.
I don't know, has the, the state has said that?
That's what, well, Matt had told us that.
Yeah, Senator Wall Striker's office. That's how they explained it to us, but the response that we got from DGS was. Different than what we got from Wall Striker's team. On how the distribution works.
And the response you got from G, DGS is what I expected to hear. I've done a number of these before. And that's what I expected to hear, because they're very careful about making sure the money gets spent where they want it to go.
Of course, and I, I appreciate that. Okay, well, I mean.
We can ask for that, we can ask for that and. Try to get a, a phone call together to ask specifically if it can be escrowed. But I have not seen that before.
Okay. Well, I, I would always say that, you know, obviously, I've said before, that my. Primary goal here is to protect the money so that it gets us what, what we applied for and doesn't go into a failed project. If. Putting it into escrow, obtaining the money and then putting it with an escrow agent. Helps the developer credential or, you know, get to closing. As long as that money doesn't get released to him until some cer- certain point. I, I don't have a problem with doing that if DGS will greenlight that.
Correct, that's why it would be going from DGS into an escrow account, because it, it just so the town could then certify that it has the funds.
And so then, then the developer could go to the banks and say, look, I have this most hot of money, helps me get to being close on this loan.
No, I don't know why. I don't know why it isn't enough to have it certified that the government has it, state has it and will. Disperse it. Once certain things happen.
Yeah.
Because the escrow account's going to have the same. Restrictions.
Yep.
So. And any other questions, direction for Sue Ellen? Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding this conversation? Okay. All right, we good?
Good.
Well, thank you for joining us. We're, we're meeting on Wednesdays now so that you can come anytime.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I talked to Shayna today. I have, I'm going to have, ask you a question at another time, but she. She hinted something to me, so I'm regarding something you had told her, so I want to follow up, but you should talk to Sue Ellen, talk to Sue Ellen. So I will.
Okay.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much. Let's see, I don't think we have any, I've lost my agenda here. Here it is. Oh, we're down to public appearances, Sue Ellen, you do not need to stay for that if you don't want. So thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay. What's that? I shouldn't waste.
No, I'm clicking off.
Uh, this is the opportunity to bring up anything that you would like to, that's not on the agenda. Do you have any hands? Joe?
Yeah, thanks. I was wondering if anyone on the council has any details about the, I believe it's Kensington Crossing Project. You know, what are we going to see more than just a? An empty lot here?
Yeah, Joe, I can, I can real quick. I talked to the building developer. They are finalizing stormwater management plans with the county. The county has had. A number of, because it's a very, very tight site. They have to get every single calculation right down to, and I kid you not, the large planter boxes that will go in. Because they do capture rainwater and then that rainwater has to go somewhere. They are double checking all of those and they wanted. One last. Schematic around the. These planters. The developer believes those were to be in today. It could be reviewed and possibly approved as early as Friday. So maybe by late this week, they're, they're actually very optimistic now between that. Late this week or early next week, they believe they should be able to have. Their DPS permits approved and then they would be setting a schedule for construction.
So when do we expect to see something other than a vacant lot?
Hopefully, I mean, if that timely timetable were to hold, it would likely be. Within a month or so, maybe four to six weeks, you would see actual construction commence. They then have a, their rough order was 12 months. Their general contractor believes. They should be able to actually complete construction in closer to nine to 10 months, because a lot of the. Supply chain issues have, are resolving themselves within the commercial redevelopment area. It does put them into the winter months for some of the peak of constructions, which. That's just a, we don't know what our winter will be, right? A lot of snow impacts it, a lot of having the heat. In open building for setting pipe and things like that, so that's why they're still, they're working with that nine to 12 months. So if they were to have shovels in the ground in October, then we should be somewhere between July and October of 24 that the building would be open.
Well, they're, they're ba- they're basically building a shell and then as the tenants come in, each. Section would have to be built out for that particular tenant, so that will take additional time. So the. It'll be built but may not yet be. Ready to be moved into until the, until they're built out for each tenant.
And finally, what are the prospects of, of serious traffic disruptions along Connecticut Avenue during their? Nine to 12 month construction period? Seems like they could be substantial.
I mean, their plan with the county is that they will manage everything within the footprint of their site. We've seen this in other parts of town as well, Medina down the road, the Silver Creek Apartments. It's not to say that it, there are not days where. They need to take a lane. To bring material in, to bring equipment in, cranes, things like that. But so, you know, with a properly managed construction plan, those should be minimum. And obviously, I believe, you know, Matt will do a very good job of working with them to ensure that it's not during. The directional peak traffic times. Right? So so long as we can do it between kind of 10 and 3. That helps to minimize those kind of impacts.
They're also not taking out dirt, as much dirt, that probably takes some, but they're not building an underground garage. Like both Medina and Silver Creek did, so that's less likely of big dump trucks taking away loads and loads of dirt. And concrete trucks coming in and building a garage.
Better than the self storage site, which was going to remove four levels of dirt.
Hey Connor Crimmins, since you have the floor there, I was wondering. Whatever happened to the Joseph Park plans? That was such a topic of controversy. Five, six months ago and haven't heard about anything since then. Is it just sort of dormant or?
Well, I want to stress it, it wasn't a plan. It was a conversation that we started. And so we started the conversation about. How is Joseph's Park being used?
I think it was, it was more like, could we sell it for, to raise some money?
And that's what I'm going with is, we started that conversation. How is it being used today? Right? It's a park, but how is it being used? What are other ways it could be used? And one of those uses would be to sell it. And then use those proceeds toward some other strategic initiative of the town. Now, we wouldn't, in my opinion, we wouldn't sell it without a plan. We don't have a plan at the moment that needs those funds. But we wanted to start a conversation around, because we've been going park to park, as you've seen through the town, or hopefully had a chance to see. And trying to forge an identity for those parks and then put, you know, resources toward. Bringing that identity forward, right? Whether it's a garden park or it's the fountain park or it's the concert park or it's the playground park. And Joseph's Park. That does not share that same level of identity, and so it started a conversation of. Maybe its identity is something other than a park.
So where do matters stand now? I guess that's my real question.
Yeah, we started a conversation.
I know that. Where do things stand now?
Joe, I'd love to be able to finish this sentence if I can. We started the conversation. To solicit feedback from residents and nearby neighbors to hear multiple perspectives. We gathered that feedback so that we could understand how others felt, other than just those of us on the council. Now, it's a, okay, great, should we find a strategic initiative that we may? Want the resources from and selling Joseph's Park is one thing we could do. Then we would pick that initiative back up and continue that conversation.
So it sounds like the short answer is it's in limbo. There's been no planning done on this. It's just kind of, that controversy sort of faded away pretty quickly.
It's been tabled, Joe. We've tabled it.
We had other staff priorities that we were trying to. Meet last spring and summer and that we, we were going to bring it up again, once we sort of had fewer priorities ahead of it.
Good, that's a simple answer. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Anything else? All right. So everybody liked meeting on Wednesday. We good? I get worked out well. I think staff appreciated having the, not having the crunch on Monday. So that was good. All right, so our next meeting will be Wednesday, October 11th. We do plan to meet in person. Kate Stewart will be our guest. This, we decided to go virtual this, this month, some people had some of the sniffles and just decided, let's just all keep our germs at home. So hopefully everybody will be 100% and we'll be able to meet in person. But the great thing about Zoom is that we can change and still have our meetings and everybody can come. Okay, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much and everybody have a good evening and now you don't have to drive safely home. You're already. All right, bye bye.